Thank you. Good evening, this is June 16, 2015, the Planning Board is now in session. Minutes of the meeting?
Make a motion for a minute.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by John, all in favor, unanimous.
Four.
One abstention.
Oh, one abstentions, oh, sorry, one abstention, Babe, my nanny abstained. Any one P plans? Continue review, amend, decide plan 120 to 128, Midway Street, Muffet Plaza Association.
So.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Biancetto from Allen Major Associates, we were here talking about this project just two weeks ago, we're here before you with some revised plans and reports per your request to directly address the concerns of the Planning Board, here with Attorney Joe Antonellis representing the owner, RD Management. So, you received-
Before you get going there-
Sure.
Did you get the comments from Bonnie, our engineer?
Just a few minutes ago.
Just a few minutes ago, okay, because they're going to read them into the minutes.
That's fine.
Okay. So, Bonnie, she's our town engineer, she's unable to attend tonight's meeting, but she has the following, 120 to 128 Midway Street, Muffet Plaza Associates, the issue related to the drainage system have still not been resolved, if the site plan is approved, it should be contingent upon replacing and improving all damage on a non-functioning drainage structure, including pipes, catch basins, and drain manholes, all replacement structures should meet the current town standards. 400 East Main-
No, no, she only has one.
Oh, one.
She has comments on each, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's that one, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, I was ready to move on with all of them. Okay, so that's what she has to say.
Before I go into my presentation, would the chairman and the board like to, could I provide a response to that?
Yes, you can.
So, we agree with that, we are working on those drainage issues like we talked about at the last hearing, since the last hearing, we have had CCTV inspection, just got the results last Friday. So, what we're doing is looking at that information, we're going to work with Bonnie, we're going to provide her the video, we're going to work with her to address her comments, that's all part of that Conservation Commission purview in terms of meeting the 10 stormwater standards, so, we're fine with if the board is interested in approving the site plan, making it contingent on the drainage updates.
Your findings.
We haven't finished looking at the video yet, we're just getting into it.
I didn't say final, final.
Right, I don't want to provide any background until we've really had a chance to look at it in full. Agreed, it would be premature.
Okay, so you'll be working with Bonnie?
You'll be back.
Yes.
And you'll be back, okay.
That's right, so we'll, we'd like to provide updated drainage reports, sorry, drainage plans and reports, and a whole response memo, just like we normally would to Conservation, that's not a problem at all.
Okay. You may continue.
Great, so, in regards to the updated plans, just a quick summary, I have black and white plans that you have in front of you, I can go through all the details, but I'm sure your time is valuable, and there's other applicants before you, I'd like to just quickly go through them. Essentially, most of the improvements relate to the driveways on Beaver Street, to the driveway on Medway, and some other site plan changes to address some Conservation Commission concerns and other minor tweaks to the plan. But the majority of the changes are on the layout materials plan, the truck turning plan, and then the traffic report that World Tech Engineering put together addressed the concerns of the Planning Board from the last time. So, starting with the Medway road entrance, it was a request of the Planning Board to open up that curve on the right turnout, we have addressed that concern of the board directly by opening that up, further creating an incentive for people leaving the site and really take that right. We've also further painted out that island, a little bit further narrowing that width of the exit aisle, the right turnout, and we've also added vertical granite curbing, which is a request of the board on that center island to further discourage people from making that left. So, all those changes have occurred up on Medway on the current plant set in front of you, second set of changes are on Beaver.
Ryan, can I just-
Go ahead.
Sure.
I know obviously you can't pivot the meeting if they want it, if they so chose to go over the curbing, but it's orientated because it's difficult to exactly, this looks a little more severe than what you're showing.
Yeah, your black and white plans are updated, this has not been updated, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's why-
Good question.
This looks a lot more in line with what we were looking at rather than what you're showing, so, okay.
Correct. So, in regards to Beaver Street, we took a careful look, it was a request of Joe and the Planning Board to take a careful look at these two driveway entrances in terms of safety, in terms of site distance, in terms of stopping distance, in terms of the three lanes out of each, and we carefully addressed that in a traffic report by World Tech and some updated plans, and some work on site. If you've recently driven by the site since Friday morning, the trees were cut down at this corner, as we last discussed, that was acted on in quick fashion. So, we've taken out the visibility concern at the northeast corner of the site.
I was there today, I saw that.
Can you, would you say it was vastly improved?
It was a big, it was a big improvement, there was an improvement, yes. There's still a couple of areas where the trees are-
Of course, I was trying to get out into the-
Hidden from people going around, but-
Sure.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
I'm just-
So, that's an immediate improvement, not in black and white plans, but in reality on the site today.
I saw that today.
And so, World Tech's traffic analysis addresses that, there's an exhibit that shows the exact site distance from a car exiting that street and Beaver Street, so that was addressed as well. Those are the big, the big changes, again, if you want me to go through all the details and the whole set of plans, I can do that, but I thought it would just be great to do a quick overview of the issues that probably are most important to you. We've addressed the drainage, discussed that, you know, we'll be working on that with Bonnie now that we have an actual inspection video of the whole drainage system. So, that's, that's the big summary. Again, we're here before you for an amended site plan approval, if it's possible, and you feel we've addressed the Planning Board's concerns, what we'll be looking for tonight is a closure or on that public hearing, with the condition that, as you had discussed at the top of the hearing, that we coordinate and work with Bonnie and address that drainage questions, and we'll provide updated plans for that, but, again, that's really more conservation-related. So, that's, that's the big summary from the top down. Sure, it all, it all ties together, I don't disagree, but-
Okay, let me open up to the board, is there anyone, Joe? Babe? Joe?
I just had, looking at the site distance, which I think is fine, the only question I had was there was one tree that was remaining within the property that seemed to be in the site distance, and I'm just worried about, you know, I can tell right now you can see past it.
Yep.
I'm worried about that tree in the future in terms of, I think it's right in line with the site distances, the tree gets, gets a little bit bigger, or the leaves start hanging down, there's maintenance, which I just don't think is worthwhile, I just assume see that tree removed as opposed to remain.
So, let's, is it possible to address that concern? So, this is an existing photo-
Mm-hmm.
Showing the pre-clearing. So, this tree is now gone, the next two trees were left, as noted. All this woods has now been cleared. So, looking from the side driveway, approximately where you'd be stopping now-
He's already got the other one.
The improvement, the improvement is this tree's now gone, those two are still there, you can see even with the cars coming right by, you can still see those cars, and now with all this cleared out, you can see straight past the corner of the edge of the property. So, I'd like to suggest, and I think if you go by, you'll see it's that and through from there.
Yeah, not first.
The other concern, if I may, is that you'll note from this perspective, a car would be much closer to Beaver Street in the proposed condition, so we've pulled that whole driveway curb cut up like we talked about to increase our visibility. So, to address your concern, I don't think those trees are really-
I think it's the second tree that I'm worried about, and I'm not worried about, I know today it's fine, I'm not worried about today.
He's saying in the long-term-
I'm worried about the long-term, and as you pull out on the driveway, that's the one tree that as you look back actually gets in line, the one that's, the one that's in further, I don't think is an issue, because, you know, as you look down here, I'm pulling myself out further-
Sure.
And there's one tree that sort of sticks out, and I'm saying, why does that tree need to be there?
Yeah, so I think we can cut that down if that's a concern.
That was my only thing, I was pleased that the-
We're also trying to bounce.
Was above 35 degrees, 35 miles an hour, because I thought that's where it needed to be, so, that's what I needed to, but I just don't want, I don't want there to be an issue downstream if that tree gets bigger or the leaves start falling, so.
It's the final tree.
Yes, that's, yes, that, yes.
I don't think that's a-
Notice that the lower limbs on that could come off and would help-
I'll just take the tree down.
But, but, it becomes, it becomes an issue downstream that I think we can just get rid of it.
Not a problem, not a problem, it's done.
Get rid of them.
That was, that was the only comment I had looking at the report, I was glad to see the, that you had addressed the issue, so I'm going to try to go through it.
Right, with the headlights.
Yeah, I know where that is, yeah, I saw that today. Okay.
So, consider that done, that's-
So, you're going to write that down so you can consider that?
We'll put it on the plan as an update.
Okay.
That's minor.
I think they did have a letter from Sue. I think that's all true.
Joe said it?
Yeah, that's all I had, Babe, Babe, I think I had a question.
Do you have something?
I just, the sewer, did they get, we get a letter from the sewer.
Is it possible to address that?
Yes, it is, please do.
So, we did, about a month or so ago, Sewer Commission met, they approved the site plans with the condition that any grease traps were at least 1,000 gallons, and that was the only condition, which they absolutely will be, because that has, that's a requirement of the state, and we'll provide a response letter when we respond to Bonnie's comments as well, and I'll respond to that, just like I'm saying tonight, that it'll be addressed, it'll be at least 1,000 gallons, that's not a problem.
I'll step in?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the letter was actually in the fire.
Yeah, no?
I did.
He all set, John?
My fault for not being- Joe has something to say, he has three words. I'm waiting, I'm waiting to pay attention with his three words.
He's on the clock.
Sign the plan.
I like mine better.
No, no.
I like mine better.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion? Do you want to speak, Joe?
No, I just was, I was hoping on behalf of the applicant, to only say that, you know, we would like to have the site plan approved tonight but for the issues that Bonnie raised, because the camera was very difficult to get someone on the site, they're so backed up, but we got someone there, certainly address each and every one of those issues as they come, because if we could get the plan approved, we can then get it out for bid and begin the process of really moving forward with the substantial economic impact that's going to be made to that facility, and we'd like to get our bids out and bid packages ready with an approved plan. Again, we'll, we'll deal with the drainage issues as we go, I, you know, Ryan is very well aware of the status of drainage here in town, so.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'll move, we approve the plan.
We've got to close the public hearing.
A close of public hearing.
It's not, it's not a public, amended.
It's amended. Okay, John moved to approve the plan, do I hear a second? Okay, a second, Joe?
Approve substitute finalization.
Right.
Right. So, John made-
I'm somewhat hesitant, I'd really like to see-
I can tell you.
I'd rather see, I'd be honest with you, I'd be happy looking-
I mean, I have no other issues, but I would like to see what the drainage, what the drainage looks like at the end of the day before I approve a plan, I-
Okay. So, what's the pleasure?
Especially if there are pipes that are compromised, that we may at that point in time say, maybe we should do it a different way, I think it's appropriate to have that on the plan, so.
So, I think, if I may address that-
I'm with you, Joe.
If I may address that, the owner was here at the last public hearing, and his comment was, and it's my, it's direction to me, if the drainage sections need to be replaced, say there's deteriorating rusted pipe, there's big holes in it, it will be replaced, if there's a structure, that's, and that's all going to be visible in that video, so.
I understand, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, there's no doubt that that would happen, but at the end of the day, if, if the design were, we're not going to make you replace the system if it's okay, but if the system is not okay, then there may be for us or for you a better way of doing that, and if that's the case, I'd like to have that on the plan that I approve, not later on.
If I may address the board, that, the plans that you actually sign will be the ones that are approved by Conservation Commission, so they won't be the plans that you see tonight, we'll address all the concerns of Conservation, we'll take that whole set of revised plans, give you one complete set which addresses Conservation's concerns, Bonnie's concerns, and has those updated drainage items on it, and you can endorse that plan in that signing block that's on the plan.
Then, then it still doesn't matter, because we'll sign those plans when they're ready to be signed, and if they're ready in two weeks, we'll sign them. There's no, I have no, you know, again, I have no problem with that being my only issue, but, I don't, I don't, I don't see what we're signing then tonight, we're obviously not signing anything, so-
No.
Nope.
I don't, I don't understand the issue of, I don't-
Just, just for scheduling purposes that might help the board put it in perspective, then Concom will be hearing it for the first time Thursday.
Second, second.
Second time, Thursday, so they'll be discussing it Thursday, reviewing the proposed changes.
Mm-hmm.
So, hopefully, they'll review the video by then and know what those changes will be, it's unlikely Concom will finalize anything this Thursday. It's my understanding that they'll go at least until next month, while their meeting next month is two days after our meeting next month, so, our only meeting next month, just, just-
July 14.
July 14.
And Concom's on July 16, for whatever that's worth, that's, those are the facts of the schedules and how it would all play out.
Well.
Again, I guess I'll, I'll sit where I am, I don't have any other issues with it, you know, I'm more than happy to tell the applicant that, I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable until I see that to finalize the thing, but that's the only issue that I have anymore, I'm, I'm glad that they, they've addressed the traffic issues that I had.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table here, John motion to approve, did I hear a second?
It's awfully quiet.
It's awfully quiet.
No, I'm with Joe, and then-
Hearing none.
Respectfully, then, we will be at your next meeting.
Yes.
I can, I think from what I'm hearing, but I don't mean to say the, I think I've, the surface plan, let's call it, if I may, the surface site plan outlining the location of the structures, the position of the parking spaces, the entrances and exits, that you're all comfortable with the, with that plan, with the renovations that have made to it, been, and alterations that have been made to it, and we can feel comfortable that when we come back to the next meeting, we'll be dealing solely with the drainage issues.
Right.
As far as mine, yep.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Well, then, thank you, I guess we'll see you on the 14, Bastille Day, thank you.
Oh, gee, you know everything, don't you?
I have another meeting that night, definitely, that one for later, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll see you on the 14th and-
Very good.
Address all the things that Bonnie and Joe are discussing, so, we'll be fine.
Thank you.
Sounds good, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
I am, yeah.
Looks like a, it is a Subaru.
Could be.
Is it blue?
They want to say that.
Continued site plan review, 400 East Main Street, the Free Building Corporation has been continued, if anyone is here, until the 14th, is it the 14th?
14th of July.
14th of July, so, the Free Building Corporation site plan review will be continued on the 14th of July. Next is the continued review of amended site plan of 154 East Main Street, World's Gym.
Mine, Bob.
What is that? I know. I was going to say, is it, is it number?
No, see the way she did it, number three is for that.
Two.
Number six, is this one, so put six.
Six, okay. And number two is what? This is five.
That was bad.
That's gone.
That's gone.
Okay. Thanks, Danny. Thank you. Hey, Bonnie. All right, I'm all set, yes, so I'm here.
Hi, thank you. You remember at the last meeting, we, we looked at this site, this amended site plan for World Gym, this is the existing Imperial Auto, and lastly was Imperial Partners. So, we discussed traffic movements within the site and also trying to generate some green space, and after several conversations back and forth with Larry, and Larry talking to Bonnie, we've come up with this particular scheme, we've left the one-way aisle in the back, is, is the way it is, with the one-way parking, what we've done is we've opened up an entrance here onto Hamilton Street, so now we, and we provided green space along Hamilton and along East Main Street, and we've got 114 parking spaces, which the applicant feels will be sufficient, he can live with that. So, now, any traffic coming in on East Main doesn't have to leave via East Main, if they want to go down Hamilton Street, they can go out this way and go down Hamilton Street. Anybody coming in this way can't find a place to park, they can, you know, come in here, you know, so.
That's an impossible.
So, we've got, so we've got another access, makes it easier if traffic, well, it doesn't, doesn't force everybody out onto East Main Street, we know that was a concern of Joe's to have everybody going on this way. Rather than turn this around so that people coming in here to park and finding space they got at the Hamilton Street, they couldn't get back into the site, so.
That's right.
Now, now, you know, coming in this way, you can, you can always get back into the site or get back out onto Hamilton or East Main Street. We've added, this increased the green area of the site to 12 and 1/2 percent where it was less than, less than two before, so.
I think you were being generous when you said less than two.
Well, yeah, it could be.
Deadlines don't come up.
So, so basically, this is, this is what we've done, we've added some curb stops along in here, because like, we weren't proposing any curbing here, where they were going to create this little patio area, so we put a few curb stops in here, put a couple right in here where this walkway, we added, we allowed this pavement to remain and have it be a walkway, there's a big double door here that usually even bring the cars in, so we might, you know, we can utilize that, and we, we adjusted the handicap signs according to the Commission on Disabilities letter. That's pretty much it.
Now, Bonnie, Bonnie makes just a comment that her previous comments were either directly addressed or alternative proposed, she has no further comments, so.
Did I put the sewer letter in there as well?
We have the sewer letter, yes.
Well, Babe doesn't have anything to ask.
Huh?
Babe doesn't have anything to ask.
The sewer letter is here.
He will. Yeah, give him a second.
They voted unanimous to amend the site plan on 154 East Main Street.
Bob, I assume the dumpster pad's right, right in the general location in the corner?
I like this much better.
Yeah, up in here?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Jim, I don't think you could just mark that. I'd rather have them in a designated area than just randomly get moved around. Specifically, I'm not 100% positive that based on your applicant's initial needs, but I understand that they weren't thrilled with, they had to take some parking, I, I just don't want to run into an issue that there's not enough parking, where you're taking parking spaces and using randomly for dumpsters.
Yep. Having floating around.
Precisely, so I prefer to, I mean, I, I have no comment.
All set?
At least with this arrangement, any of the customers that can't find a space in the main parking field in front of the building have a way to get to the back and still come back into the site. Previously, the one suggestion had been make the, as Bob mentioned, make the one-way and the rear going west, well, if you do that, the only way to go is up Hamilton Street, and I don't think there's going to be a very large percentage of people on that site that are going to have any need to go up Hamilton Street beyond that back entrance anyway.
It's not true, someone who, I'm trying to live up in around my area-
Oh, well, you can't-
It'd be much more, it'd be a heck of a lot more favorable to take Hamilton than it is to sit on East Main, so.
Well, you can't, you can't go.
John, right? So, I was thinking more like you, John, because God knows, I'd have a heart attack if I went to a gym.
At any rate, this seemed to be a more-
No, no, it's a great-
Okay. All set, Joe?
Yeah, there's two things, there's two things that I, just looking real quick that, and knowing the site a little bit, is signs, is the sign poles coming down, so, you know, I believe there's multiple signs on this site, and I'd like to, to bring that into some sort of conformance, and the other thing I believe is, I thought there was a flag pole that sort of was going to sit out in the middle here, so I assume that flag pole's coming down. Doesn't show on the site, but-
The flag poles, the white-
They only show one existing sign, Joe, in the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I believe these other circles that aren't labeled are actually sign poles.
I thought they were lights.
Those are lights.
I thought they were light poles.
Those are light poles.
No, no, he's talking in the green area.
Here?
Yeah.
Those are lights.
That was a light, that's a light.
One of those, one of those, I guarantee you is a sign.
Well, it's, it's a light pole with a sign off to the back, and then there's a white pole, which I think is the flag pole.
Flag pole's sort of in the middle of the site. There's two, there's two poles out there that have, there's at least two on this site, because there may be one on, on the, on lot 35 that has a sign, so that, that's outside the lot, but I believe there's two sign poles out in the road along this site, I'd like to see one of those removed at least. So, if the existing sign that says existing sign here is the sign they're going to use, that's fine, if it's going to be another one, I, then, you know-
Two existing signs, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know which sign is staying where, and whatever one isn't, I'd like to, I'd have to label this removed.
One.
And one.
The flag pole, I think, isn't, isn't showing up.
Oh, here it is, here.
It is showing two, Joe, you're right.
I just see it, I just see it here on the left-hand side, where it says-
So, I would, I would assume that this existing sign, they would want to reuse this or put a new one up at that location, which would seem fine, but the other one, I think we should, I don't think there's a need for that sign, it's time that could actually come down.
The one closer to lot 35, Joe?
That's my feeling, I'm not going to tell the applicant which one to take or not, but that, that would be my feeling, would make more sense to, to me, but I, I don't think they, there's a need for two anymore, certainly along that stretch. The flag pole, I think, is in the middle of the parking lot, so obviously that's going to have to come down, I don't believe it's labeled here, but it's just something going forward that, you know, we just need to check on, I don't, I don't even believe the flag pole is usable anymore, I think the top of it's been taken down or was hit by lightning at some point.
The other, the other detail on the plan is that the curbing along the east side of Hamilton Street, the new curbing is going to be asphalt, which, you know, we discussed-
There's asphalt here.
Either concrete or granite previously, but just so you're aware, that the plan is showing asphalt.
Yeah, at least it's-
But it will close it up.
Yeah, at least it's, I believe it's a step in the right direction to try to bring this into a little more conformance, I, you know, the rest of the things, I think are fine, at least there's been some, some attempt to get it closer to the conformance. That was all I had.
Okay, so you want to take care of that, Bob?
Yeah, if you would, you know-
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, subject to only having one sign post, and that was your only concern, Joe?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I, I think the flag pole has to come down based on this, Yeah, I, I think the flag pole has to come down based on this because I think it's in the middle of the parking lot, so I don't believe there's any way they could stay there.
Yeah, again, forgive me, I, I don't show it, I don't see it being shown here at all, so I'm assuming that.
You'll have to check old plans and see if you've got it located on some, but somehow it didn't make it onto this plan.
And provided that the, the flag pole is not in the middle of the parking lot somehow.
Sure.
Motion made by Pat to have one sign and to make sure that the flag pole is no longer existing.
Well, no, no, they can relocate it.
They can relocate it.
They can put a flag pole someplace else. It just can't be in the middle of the.
Okay.
I'm not going to go down that path if they can't flag, if they can't flatten, oh, yeah, I'm not saying that.
Sorry about that.
No, no.
Okay.
It's not what I said.
Can be replaced.
Relocated.
Relocated. Just can't be in the, in the parking lot somewhere.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yeah, that was an approval based on those two.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
You're going to be around for a few days?
I am, I am going to be around, yeah.
I'll get you a mile out tomorrow.
Okay, Bob.
Okay, Robbie.
Okay. Number six, amended site plan 235 East Main Street Interstate Batteries resubmission. I have a comment here from Bonnie. Yeah, I'm trying to find it, yeah.
Got me to read my report?
I got it right here, all right.
She got it?
I got it.
She's all done. All her comments are fine.
Yeah, they are. Dear Madam Chairman, the applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 13,294 square foot addition to the existing commercial building on the subject property. The Westerly Building, Building One, is to be raised. The proposed use will be retail wholesale vehicle batteries stored and associated parking. This application is a resubmital of the 1-2015 application that was subsequently withdrawn. Specifically, the two, a 2,375 square foot addition will correct, connect the existing Easterly Building, number two and three, and a 10,919 square foot addition will also be, will also extend Building Two to the west for the total building area of 27,767 square feet. The building expansion will accommodate retail and office space as well as a wholesale storage area and interstate batteries. Northeast Electric will remain in its current location in Building One. Adequate off-site parking is provided in two parking lots and site access of traffic circulation is designed to separate the retail traffic from staff parking and fleet delivery truck and semi-truck assess. The existing driveway, driveways are being narrowed and relocated to meet the current design standard. Also, the amount of open space will be increased from 22,220 square feet, 20% to 47,773 square feet, 43%. All applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend the amended site plan be approved, subject to the relevant departmental comments. Respectfully, our town planner Larry Duncan. Bonnie's comment, our town engineer has made, G and H made additional revisions onto the site and the septic system submitted for 225 East Main Street. After five rounds of comments and revisions, I recommend approval for the plan submitted June 9, 2015. And.
Her previous two letters are in there too.
That's her previous letter. That's her previous letter. And the Highway Department, I reviewed the above-mentioned site and find it to be satisfactory. However, I would like to inform the applicant that the above-mentioned section of East Main Street is under the jurisdiction of MassDOT. All roads opening permits must be obtained through their office. All trench permits must be obtained by the Milford Highway Department. The Fire Department, the Milford Fire Department has reviewed and amended site plan submitted 235 East Main Street, requests no change. This is the Water Department. Now, the Water Department has a whole list. Request the following plan amendments. Only the Wat-, Milford Water Company approved materials may be used for the project. Application for the water service will need to be filled out. Determination of water meter size will be done at that time. Milford Water Company specifications must be followed. A Milford Water Company inspector is required to, for the project. The Milford Fire Department will determine placement of the fire hydrants. The Milford Water Company, Milford Water lines must be laid in their own trench with no other utility. The trench are within five feet of the MWC water line. Tape, tapping sleeves used to either be, used will be either stainless steel, tapping sleeves, asbestos cement pipe, or mechanical joint tapping sleeves in cast iron or Dossel iron. Materials used for this project are two-inch copper K pipe and six-inch Dossel iron class 52. Off the, off this line, fire lane can be reduced to four inches inside the building. Two-inch domestic water line will be tapped off MWC water line on East Main Street. Older existing water services will be shut and cut off at the water main and East Main Street and witnesses, witnessed by the Wat-, Milford Water Company inspector. Pipe burial will be four and a half feet deep in 12-inch sand bed, three and a half feet compact gravel per specifications. All water lines within 10 feet of the sewer must be sleeved with a full bar of plastic pipe, one side diameter larger and kept. All water lines will be chlorinated and pressured, pressured tested by Milford Water Company specification supervised. All approved Mil-, Water Company contracts can escalate the water service supervisor by the Milford Water Company inspector. Milford Water Company is a, is a MADP, full compliant cross-connection company. All building water lines are subject to, to point of the use of cross-connection and compliance for specification. As part as the water, as part of Milford Water Company conservation plan, no irrigation system of any kind may be connected to the Milford Water System. Respectfully submitted, Thomas Dugan, operational manager. Okay.
Nothing sewer commission later.
There's nothing on the sewer commission. Oh, here it is.
They have no comment.
They have no comment. They have no comment. All right. That was good.
Okay, so my understanding is, is that Peter Lavoy did speak to the Water Department and we, and the plans do address either by note or by changings to the plan, all the comments that he had in his letter.
Say that again, Bob.
For the Water Department. The Water Department letter, all the comments have been addressed either by notes added to the plan or the plan correct, you know, changed to meet the requirements of, of the letter.
Of the Milford Water Company?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so this plan is previously approved. Basically, the only, the only change, the only change that's come about is the fact that the, the existing building where Northeast Electrical is, that the Interstate Battery was going to use as part of their, their, their business, has a lease in place, which means they're going to be there for, for another year. So for Interstate Battery to go in and, and be able to function right away and be able to use the property, what they had to do was they had an addition, they had a small addition proposed here, roughly the same size of the existing building that was, that you see here. So what they've had to do is basically double that in size to get them to a point where they need, like, they need 20,000 square feet to just be able to operate. And then, then when they get, when they move out, they'll have the additional space that they need over 27,000 square feet. So the change has been to connect these, this, add to this building and this building with these two areas here to, to provide them with the 20,000 square feet. And the addition of this, the addition to this building is in an area where pavement had previously existed and was, was part of the other plan as well, so there's no increase in impervious area being proposed. The, we have received our curb cut permit from Mass Highway. We did apply to them and we have received that, so we do have that in hand. And everything else is, is the same. It's, nothing really has changed.
Septic's still under the parking lot?
Septic is, is, is here, yes, under the parking lot.
Any questions for the board? Joe, Babe?
No.
John?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the amended site plan?
A second.
Moved, moved to approve the amended site plan by Joe, second by John. All in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous.
Yeah.
All this paper.
Yes.
Okay, what's next here? Right along? CBA special permit referral, 16 Claflin Street, Claflin Street, L.A. Blair House. Oh, I'm sorry, oh.
I want to rest. I got to rest up.
Oh, all right.
Get my breath, get my bearings.
Okay, CBA special permit, 77 Purchase Street, Consigli Family LLC.
He's got one more inning in him.
I know.
He needs to rest.
That's it.
He needs to sit down.
Okay.
Before he's called to play.
Dear Madam Chairman, the applicant resists Z, requests ZBA special permit to allow for the creation of three lots from an original parcel that contains a three-family dwelling on 77 Purchase Street. The proposed lot configuration will retain a, a 33,229 square foot lot, Lot One, for the three-family dwelling at 77 Purchase Street. Create a new 21,922 square feet, single-family building, Lot Two, fronting on Purchase Street. The plan will also establish a 1.98, 98-acre interior parcel, Parcel A, to be used in the, to be used in conjunction with the future development of the adjacent land to the east that fronts Sumner Street. All applicant, all applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, a favorable recommendation should be forwarded to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Respectfully, Larry Duncan, our town planner. Okay.
Sounds good. Is there a motion?
All set?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. John Fernandez, attorney, here with Mike Murphy from the Consigli Companies and Mike Dean from Gary, Aaron, Helen. For a simple overview of this, you can see its location is Purchase Street by the Purchase Street Market and Fountain Street, Consigli Homestead property. What you're seeing in terms of a division of property is actually consistent with an action taken at town meeting where the Consigli family secured a TIF from the town that was approved at town meeting.
Yes.
Well, when you go to the back of the lot, past the yellow total area, what's back there to the right where you see just the triangular piece of hash-marked building is the Granite Building, which is the Consigli headquarters, and where you see the somewhat L-shaped building directly to the back, that's the old ambulance building that is also owned by Henry Consigli. So Henry and Phyllis own that big parcel that's outlined in purple. And today, that entirety of that parcel is occupied by the three-unit building. Lot that's on Lot One. So what are we asking for here? What we're asking for is the creation of a conforming industrial lot to the back that has where it says total acres. That, because the industrial zone doesn't require a certain acreage or a certain frontage or anything else, that, that essentially is landlocked there, but the intention of the Consigli family is to merge that parcel in construction with where the ambulance building is and create a new office building back there that will be part of the campus of the Consigli Companies that would be joined in campus style with the Granite Building. That was part of the TIF to create new jobs here and the like. So in order to do that, we need to get the commercial piece, industrial piece away from the residential portion. So you see a residential line crossing the lot. That residential line in front is RB and in the back it's the IA. So what the intention here is to cut the IA piece of it out, create that as a conforming lot. On the residential piece, to the left, Lot Two, is a conforming, single-family residential lot, which would in its size and frontage and width, meet the requirements of today's bylaw plus in terms of area and be available for construction of a single-family home in accordance with all our setback and side yard requirements. So why are we here? We're here because the three-unit building is a non-conforming use. And so what is, what is it that we're changing and asking pursuant to Article Three of the bylaw? We're asking to alter the non-conformity by reducing the amount of land that that three-unit building occupies. So instead of it occupying that entirety of land that's in purple, which is like about three and a half acres or three and a quarter acres. Yeah, it's three and a quarter acres. It would occupy 33,000, approximately 33,000 square feet. Now, in terms of a three-unit, there's really no guidance as to how much should be occupied. If it was a two-family, our guidance is 16,000 square feet. And that's a three-unit, so there's really no guidance. But just for your purposes of understanding, when that is called a three-family, it's somewhat of a misnomer. It's really three units. There are two one-bedroom apartments in there and one two-bedroom apartment. So the collective of bedrooms in that, in that building is four, which would be the equivalent of a two-family that you might allow under a special permit, so.
Right.
If you drove by quick, you'd still swivel.
Think it was a single-family home.
You would. I, I, I've done that.
No, it doesn't, it's not your typical three-decker or.
It appears to be.
No, it looks like the single-family home.
And that's why. There's a way, it's the three-car garage.
Right, and the only, and that's what's in there is just those, it's why it looks like a single-family because it's really just one-bedroom, one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom. And the garage in the back, to finish it off, the reason we take and keep some of the land from the industrial with it is because the family wants to maintain that garage as a part of the three-unit structure. The, the, it's a big garage. It, it has been used as a contractor's garage in the past by the Consigli family and to some extent, Henry still uses it that way. But also the tenants park in there and Henry stores a car in there, but he also stores equipment in there. All of the contractor-type activities will stop.
Will stop, okay.
In that building and it will just convert to a residential garage as a part of the three-unit structure. So I'm not sure, Mike, if there's anything. What's that?
I think there was in the tin, there was this lawnmower.
There actually may be a loader in there still.
Whatever.
Yeah. Well, Henry has, he's like Dominic Capone, so their toys are their loaders, right? You know, that's, that's what they do.
Okay.
But that's it. I don't know, Mike, if either of you have anything to add to, to what I just described. There's really nothing more unique about the site than that.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion for a favorable to the ZBA.
I'll sack it, I'll do something.
Motion made by Pat, send a favorable to the ZBA, second by Babe. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good to see you, John.
Well, I'm not going anywhere.
Oh, oh, that's right. You have the, you have the other one.
You can stop because now it's Bob's turn.
Are you rested enough?
Oh, it's Bob's turn. All right, Bob.
Remember going there when Henry's father used to live there.
Okay, Bob.
Henry's father.
We're in number eight, right?
Correct.
CBA special permit referral, 16 Claflin Street, Claflin Street, LP Blair House.
Building, my parents' house.
Right.
Father used to go down there to talk to.
The applicant requests, requests ZBA special permit to allow for an expansion on the Blair House building on the subject premise. Also proposes a revision to the previously approved off-street parking lot to the rear of the property. The proposed building expansion located on Sina Hella Way will add, will add floor area to the accommodated, to converge, the conversions of existing multi-bed bedrooms to single-bed bedrooms within the nursing home. This, there, there will be no increase in the number of beds. The proposed parking lot improvements will increase the number of off-street spaces and improve the drainage and stormwater recharge for the lot. The applicant zoning requirements appear to be met, although the site will be required, although the site plan will be required for the planning board subsequent to the grant of a special permit for the ZBA. Recommend a favorable, favorable report to the ZBA, Larry Duncan, our town planner.
John Fernandez, here with Kyle Romano, the Romano family that owns and operates this facility as well as a number of others around Massachusetts and the assisted-living facility which just opened next door and.
The fence is beautiful.
Being a bit restless, they're into more activity now. And you know Jim Boudreau is their construction manager on projects. So let me just try and give you a quick overview of the, the plan and Bob can describe any of the site issues because this will be coming back for site plan. So it's an opportunity to kind of take an overview of it and see if you have any questions about it. You've seen this before you previously and the reason we're here. The Blair House, of course, is located on Claflin, Sina Hella Way.
Right.
Historically been here for certainly as long as I have, if not, how old is that building anyway? Do you know?
Old, I mean, it was Claflin Hill.
So am I, but do you have any?
Claflin Hill.
You're not old enough yet.
Oh, okay. The facility as it exists today is in this gray area here that occupies this area inside this L. You've seen this. Years ago, we came in for a special permit and the reason we need special permit is because both the Delta, I mean, the, the Adult Day Health Programs as well as the nursing program, nursing home programs are by special permit in this zone. So we have to come in for any expansion. But you saw this before because there was a plan to take the Redden property back here, which they purchased, then put a garage back here, you might remember, along with some parking and then expand the parking into this area that they, they also already owned. They're abandoning that plan because they've acquired two parcels right in here. Forty-one and forty-two, I think, on the assessor's maps, but it's this area right in here they've acquired. So rather than doing a separate garage back here and an expansion of the facility here, they were just going to incorporate the garage space. an expansion of the facility here, they were just going to incorporate the garage space into this building and eliminate it because now they can do more parking out here, change the drainage to underground drainage as well. So the plan is to do an expansion here because they need to expand the facility. The Adult Day Health Program's very strong, in need of expansion, just another of the continuum of steps along the way to keep people out of nursing homes, allow, whether it's home health care, Adult Day Health, assisted living, you know, that, that whole continuum is taking us away from, you either have to stay home or you have to go to a nursing home.
Right.
So this program is very popular. They want to expand the number of people who would occupy part of that on a daily basis. They also want to take and move to a more private arrangement with their nursing beds, such that they don't have the doubles and that they can just have single rooms for everybody. So one of the floors, the very bottom floor, which is there are two, two floors below grade, and Bob can talk more about that, two floors above grade, very bottom floor would be the garage space. I think the next floor would be the kitchen space expansion, next floor Adult Day, next floor nursing care. So that's what this facility does here. So that allows them to free up this area for parking. So that's the plan overview. Bob, I don't know if there's more you want to say about the site itself, but that's what we're asking for, the special permit under the bylaw to expand into this area and to change this and expand into that.
Oh, I just have a quick question.
Okay.
You said underneath will then be the storage for the vehicles?
Yes.
The buses, if you will?
Yes.
Okay. Not to, I enjoy stirring the pot, but I can't help myself. The problem that I'm, and I'm happy to see that you're going to do that, but I believe right now some of the buses, from time to time, I don't go there enough to be able to tell you conclusively, but from time to time, I've seen that they're on another site, which is down off of Central Street, which fortunately they used for parking requirements for their sports facility. So I'm happy to see that they're coming back on site, I guess is my point. You said that they would be coming back to the planning board, so I figured I'd just give you the heads up that as long as they're showing on this site, I'd be much happier.
Will you?
No, 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 I just said from time to time. I, I don't go there enough to tell you that they're parked there permanently. I'm not suggesting that they are.
I never see them.
I'm just simply saying that I'm happy to see.
That was a very great meeting, this, this whole.
I thought I, I thought I, I thought I put that in just the proper context when I said from time to time.
The layout of this lower level is, is going to be, the lower level is going to be slight, is going to be slightly larger than the other levels above it. You can see this dash line.
I think my point, Bob, is as long as it's, when you come, come back, it gets addressed. That's my only point.
Fair enough. We can show you that we can put fifteen vans in this, in this location, so.
For, for purposes of zoning, you don't need to show me this. I just thought, because John asked.
Fair enough.
I would give the heads up, that was it.
Fair enough.
Good point.
That was my only, thank you, comment.
Good point. Anyone else? Joe?
One more second.
Babe?
Babe, you want to do this one?
Sure. I make a motion to, we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board.
Motion made by Babe. Yay.
Put him in the record. You must be exhausted at this point.
Second, second by Pat.
Seconding one motion and making your own.
This is my first week in about a year.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Good to be in here.
That fence is absolutely beautiful.
See, if you want to, probably better put another one up on this one.
I, I, I went by it tonight.
Say you're going to.
Oh my God, it's beautiful. It is absolutely beautiful.
See that entryway?
Yeah.
I love the entryway.
The new blocks and everything.
Yeah.
Everything, I love coming around there now. It is very, very attractive.
That was a, that was a shock.
It's a nice facility.
It's very attractive. It's really a nice.
And you know what, I think.
And you're right.
You see some work going on up and down Central Street and around the area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Improving the area.
Yeah, it looks very nice. It's nice. It's a wonderful improvement.
Thank you.
For the whole area. Thank you. Good job. Looking well, John?
Me?
Yeah, you feeling well?
All right, kid, you still have two more to go.
I have to say hi to my friend, John.
I'm not sure what to say other than maybe you got to check those glasses.
It looks thinner.
Well, that is true.
That's what I mean.
It happens somehow.
Yeah, I could tell. All right.
Thank you.
See, number nine has been continued. And number ten, continued discussion, the site, sign selection.
Did anything come back from the selectmen, Larry?
No, we haven't, we haven't heard yet.
Too busy with the IT.
It was on the agenda.
Whose agenda, theirs or ours?
No, it was on our agenda, expecting a comment because we talked about it last time, but I, I still haven't heard anything. I think they.
Let's move it over to the fourteenth. Perhaps you should just inquire.
Yeah, yeah, I think we wore on to the IT.
I was just going to say, they're so busy with the IT.
No, no, I understand that, and that's fine. Unfortunately.
We need that.
This, this is their job.
Right.
Like it or not, that you have to be able to multitask, and they really shouldn't be just stuck on one subject matter, so I think a friendly, well, sorry, but.
Friendly reminder.
Friendly reminder.
That we are, we look forward to hearing from them on the fourteenth of July.
No, I, I think you tell them that we've had to move it now to the fourteenth. I'm sorry, but.
All right.
Well, hopefully they're watching.
Hopefully they're watching, moving it on to.
Listen, if Lena doesn't want to sign the letter, I will.
Oh, I definitely will sign that letter. Absolutely.
Motion to adjourn.
Formal letter?
Yes, I think.
Send them a formal letter, say, stating that we're expecting them.
We're hopeful.
That they will be, um.
Able to give us some sort of direction relative to the, to the sign.
Right, thank you. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn by Pat, second by John. All in favor? Good night, everyone. Everyone, have a good evening.